Well, she called me experienced and I appreciate that. But after taking a year and a half off from in-person events, I'm a little nervous. And it's great to see a big crowd again, but I have to say I miss wearing shorts with the jacket and it being good enough. But it's all right. It's all right. We're all back together here. So yeah, I'm Blake Stevens with W A T E. I have the privilege of moderating tonight. And I want to, of course, welcome everyone here on behalf of the League of Women Voters for Knoxville, Knox County, as well as several other nonpartisan organizations. They include the American Muslim Advisory Council, Centro Hispano of East Tennessee, the East Tennessee Society of Professional Journalists, the Knoxville Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, the Knoxville Area Urban League, the Knoxville Chapter of the N double A C P, the Knoxville New Sentinel, and Y W C A. And as she mentioned, thank you to the Phyllis Wheatley Center here for allowing us to use this space and for all your help making tonight happen. A big thank you to all the volunteers. There are a lot of them. They'll be coming around to get your questions. Some of them are sanitizing the microphones in between uses. So a lot of hard work going into tonight's event. And of course, thank you to Learn Play Sign LLC for your interpretation services tonight and making sure everyone is part of the conversation. And of course, thank you to all the candidates who made it to tonight's event. All right, so now I'll read some ground rules and some procedures. They tell me, read it verbatim, so they mean it. Display of campaign materials. In order to maintain a nonpartisan atmosphere, the League of Women Voters Board members have decided no candidate or audience member should display or wear campaign materials, hats, t-shirts, et cetera, until after the forum wraps up. It can get kind of awkward if I spot a political shirt for a candidate that is here and I have to stop things and ask you to step out. Members of the audience are encouraged to submit questions for consideration to be presented to the candidates. Throughout the forum, everyone should refrain from responding in any manner to the candidates tonight. No applause, cheering, booing, or any other response. So that really slows things down. And the best forums are when that does not happen. So candidates should focus on the issues raised by each question. You should speak only during the time you're given and avoid referring to other candidates. That's where things get super awkward, when a candidate references another candidate and I have to give the other candidate 30 seconds. So please don't make tonight awkward. All right, the order of candidate responses will alternate and it will be random. A timekeeper, Judy Paulson, right here, she'll show you when you've got 30 seconds left and when you should stop. Candidates will have 60 seconds for their opening words. They'll have 90 seconds to respond to questions and then 60 seconds for their closing remarks. None of the candidates have received any advance notice of these questions. Instead, the questions will be submitted in writing by the audience during this forum. And I already have several. There's all kinds of different handwriting here, so it's legit. Volunteers will move up and down the aisles there to provide index cards and pencils. Raise your hand and a volunteer will deliver and pick up your card. And the screening of the questions, there's a little bit about how that works. Before, questions are shared. They are screened by a committee over there in the corner, I believe, for relevance, importance to the audience in general tone, as well as to remove bias and avoid repetition. We do often have the same questions raised. So all candidates will have the opportunity to respond to every question. Responses should be confined to the issues raised by the questions. And as moderator, again, I can interrupt and enforce guidelines and format. After the forum, candidates can share materials with the audience by placing them on a table outside the auditorium. All right, now let's introduce our candidates tonight. Representing District One here, in the race for Knoxville City Council District One, we have David Hayes to our far right. And we have incumbent council member Tommy Smith. For District Two, we have incumbent council member Andrew Roberto. Also in that race, Kim Smith, who we're told had a calendar conflict and could not make it tonight. In District Three, we have council member Seema Singh here. And we're told Nicholas Cepiro could not be here as well. District Four, we have Jen McMahon. And we have council member Lauren Ryder. Tonight, Jim Claneras, we're told had a calendar conflict and could not be here tonight. District Six, we have Deidra Harper to our far left there. And we have Vice Mayor Gwen McKenzie. Garrett Holt declined to attend. And I believe I left out Elizabeth Murphy out of District One. She, we're told, had a calendar conflict. So there are your candidates. And I'm done talking now. We'll get to opening remarks. So my standard for picking the person to go first tonight was the person wearing the most green. And I believe that's Vice Mayor McKenzie. Any objections to that? All right. Vice Mayor McKenzie, your 60-second opening remarks.
Should we stand or sit? Does it matter? Stand? Okay. So good evening and thank you, everyone, for being here. Thank you for the League of Women Voters and the other sponsors for having this candidate forum this evening. I am Vice Mayor Gwen McKenzie and Sixth District City Council Representative. I am running for reelection because I want to finish my second term. I want to complete a lot of the work that we've already started on my first term. And there's so much more work to be done as regards economic investment, public safety, and also support for families and also closing the wealth gap and actually having a very huge focus on that. So thank you all for being here.
Yes, I am Deidra Harper from Knoxville, Tennessee. Born and raised, graduated from Carter High School in 2003, went on to the University of Tennessee, graduating in 2008 with a studio art degree. Then from there, going to Atlanta for two years, getting my master's in graphic design, moving back here, working with family business with my sister and my dad. And I also worked with the nonprofit organization, TENTS, Teaching to Eliminate Negative Stereotypes Through Education. So the work that I've been doing, I just felt like city council was another way for me to step up and expand the impact that I was already involved with. And I do think that there is an urgent need to address the 42% poverty rate that we are currently dealing with within Knoxville, Tennessee. So I thought city council was the best way to step up to the plate, be able to talk about policies, procedures, and impacts that will directly reduce that 42% poverty rate, as well as making sure that our citizens and constituents and community members feel heard and feel empowered on this journey.
I'm Lauren Ryder, your Fourth District City Council Rep. Appreciate you, everyone, for coming out tonight. I'm running for reelection because so many in the community urge me to do so. It's been a pleasure to serve you and I'm excited to have welcomed over 900 jobs to the Fourth District at three different employers since I've been on council. We've also added over 1,000 units of affordable housing across the city, a low-barrier shelter, and additional social workers to help address homelessness across the city. We, sorry, can't get my notes open. Many constituents have also expressed an interest in alternative transportation as well as walkability and greenways. So we've been working on sidewalks and greenways across the district and across the city. We have a critical housing shortage and I need to continue adding more housing options through the city, through the newly passed Affordable Housing Trust Act that the council has worked on. We also need to address public safety concerns through violence intervention and making sure we offer appropriate resources, training, and competitive wages to the city employees. So I look forward to serving you.
My name is Jen McMahon and I'm running to be a city council representative for District Four. I moved here to Knoxville, Tennessee, a little over six years ago, serving as an Americorps Vista with Compassion Coalition, which is now underneath the Knoxville Leadership Foundation. During that time, I was able to work with so many different people from all across Knoxville. Single working mamas, folks that were experiencing homelessness, that had been out in our woods for 12 to 14 years with lack of mental health services and care coordination. Worked with folks that were simply trying to help their neighbor but did not have the resources to be able to do so. And from there, I knew that Knoxville was my place. Knoxville was a place where I wanted to stay and I wanted to help better because there was already so many beautiful things going on here in Knoxville. I just wanted to highlight and bring to light the struggles of the folks that are working every day in our communities that are attending forums just like this.
Turning now to Seat Three here with Ms. Singh.
Hi, can you hear me? Okay. My name is Seema Singh and I'm the council representative for District Three. District Three is where I have lived on and off for about 40 years. It's the area that I sold Girl Scout cookies door-to-door. It's where I delivered newspapers. It's a place that's very important to me. It's also, I was reading some statistics today, it's an area, there are three different zip codes in there, between 54% and 68% of people are working for, which means they have jobs, but they're not making it. They're not able to make it to council meetings. They're not able to make it to meetings like this oftentimes. So I feel very honored to be able to speak up for the people who need their voices heard. Thank you.
District Two, Mr. Roberto.
Hello, I'm Andrew Roberto. I am your Second District City Council Rep. I'm running for reelection because experience matters. Four years ago, the people of the Second District and the city as a whole hired me for a job. So I got to work right away, learned the job, and tried to be an effective member of council. The people of Knoxville know my heart. The people of Knoxville and the Second District know how hard I work. And I'm going to continue to do that in a second term with your support. And so I would ask for your vote. You know, I've really tried to make sure that I've been a neighborhood advocate. I've really worked hard to, you know, have a fair environment for everyone. I've worked very hard to connect the citizens of the Second District to the services that they need. And I think if you talk to folks that have reached out to me, they'll tell you the same thing. Our city is a wonderful place. It's a beautiful place. We have great people and I would really appreciate to finish the job. Thank you.
All right, turning now to District One with Councilmember Smith.
My name is Tommy Smith. I ran for the appointment for this seat and am running for reelection for three basic reasons. One is, I think you need to be able to, in order to lead a community, you have to have served it. And I have served it for the past few years. I've served it my entire adult life. I've helped 50 nonprofits in this community thrive. I've helped over 100 small businesses grow. And I care deeply about this community. So I think in order to lead, you have to have served it. The second is, it's not enough to know about problems in our community. You have to understand what the solutions could be. And from that, you gain from thousands of hours of understanding the wounds of a community, what's worked in the past and what hasn't. Understanding the problems that we all agree on is not enough. Solutions matter. And the third is, principles are important. We all care about basic principles of fairness, justice, reducing things like poverty, but they're only as good as you're able to get them done. And unless you can collaborate with folks and get communities behind a single vision for specific things like sidewalks, it does no good to have those principles, which is shot from one another. So I think it's important to collaborate well and I appreciate your support.
Mr. Hayes.
So my name is David Hayes. My name is David Hayes. I'm your candidate for District One. And I've been involved in the community for 10 years, just about any issue you can think of, including poverty and violence and cycles of trauma, I've been involved in. And I'm a part of a movement for change. And tonight, you all are going to hear two basic paths. One path for progress and a Knoxville throne. A Knoxville where we shift the priorities in our policy and our budget to directly address meeting people's basic needs and lifting people out of poverty and lifting people out of cycles of trauma and violence. And then you will hear the status quo. The status quo, despite the rhetoric, have been incapable of addressing the rising rates of crime, excuse me, of violence, the rising rates of poverty and displacement. So tonight, I hope you all listen and y'all choose the path to progress in the city where all of us have the resources and empowerment to thrive. Thank you all.
Mr. Hayes, why don't you stay standing and I'll start the first question in your way. Because you brought up priorities and budget. And so that brings me to my first question from the audience. What are your priorities for a city budget?
I pray for a city budget. So like I said, one of the biggest priorities is addressing poverty. Right now, if you look at our city budget, it looks like our priority is just putting people in prisons and people in jails, right? We have a city budget that invests 80 times more in policing than it does Community Action Committee, which serves people out throughout the county, right? We have a city that invests over 8% more in policing than Affordable Housing Trust line. So we actually need to invest in the root causes of issues because just adding more violence to the situation doesn't actually decrease violence. We actually need to address the root causes, uplifting people from poverty and poverty. And also, we need a democratic city budget. If any of you all have heard of Knoxville Soup, it's in South Knoxville. Folks get together, they pitch in their money, and then y'all decide where that money goes. We can incorporate that sort of, and that money goes to different community organizations like City Needs. So we can actually have a system in our city government where we actually incorporate people's voices and people can have a vote on how money is spent. So we can actually address the root causes of crime and no longer just perpetuate poverty and no longer just perpetuate displacement of black and poor communities. Thank you.
Mr. Hayes and Ms. Smith.
So the biggest challenges for our city over the past year have been youth gun violence, the pandemic, and affordable housing and homelessness. So those are the problems. It's only as good as you have solutions for them. So the things that are important for me are what I call everyday economics, which means getting work and getting people to work. So that means better public transportation, better apprenticeships. We've structured significant programs in order to make sure kids have a pipeline to work after high school. That's one. The second is strong and safe neighborhoods. Legacy neighborhoods are very important, and the more we connect those, the more things like green spaces, parks, and dedicated resources equitably across the city to protect those existing neighborhoods are extremely important. Another is affordable housing. We established Affordable Housing Fund, which is the largest contribution of the city towards affordable housing in its history. I'm proud to have supported that. That will be a continued need for our community going forward. And the last is sustainability. I think our contribution towards environmental footprint is significant. I think we can do things really creative where residents participate that and not just city government. So sustainability, making sure our waterways are clean, particularly in the First District, the Tennessee River, we're at the start of the Tennessee River there in South Knoxville, and we treated that waterway in a very poor way. So I think that waterway may be one of our best underutilized assets. And it involves or impacts sustainability in our community. Parks have never been more important in our life. I mean, urban modernness is one that's extremely special that we have to sustain.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Turning now to District Six, Ms. Harper. What are your priorities for a city budget?
Yes, so thank you for that question. And I also will have to agree with David Hayes in saying that, first off, we do have a budget that is very mayor strong. And we saw that when we watched city council and how some other council members really had some input and some feedback on things that they wanted done or felt like some areas that they thought we needed to look at a little bit closer. So that's the first thing that I would like to do, is figure out how we can find a way to make sure that we have more communication, more involvement from city council members that are up here to represent a certain community or a certain district, right? So we need to make sure that we address the budget process and the way that it is done. The second thing I also think is youth enrichment programs and/or youth enrichment things that are going on in schools. I think that is very important. When you look up here on city council, we want to make sure that we are relatable and that we are able to encourage people that are younger than us that might even want to be in this role. So how can we make it to where they feel like they can be heard, that they can be empowered? Let's get trades back into the schools? Or let's figure out mentorships or partnerships that we can create with other jobs to make sure those kids have the resources that they need in order to survive? And the last thing I want to say is grassroots organizations. We know that that is a very big part in our community. And sometimes they spearhead a lot of those things. Shore Foundation is one organization that is doing a lot of those things. Unique Academy and also So It Sell It. Those are nonprofit organizations, grassroots organizations that are on the ground, working directly with kids and making sure that they can have the resources and that they're learning how to be better citizens.
Thank you. Ms. McMahon. Thank you. While education is very important to me, city council does not dictate what happens in Knoxville schools. As relates to the budget, affordable housing, addressing homelessness, infrastructure, economic development and investment, and support for nonprofits and agencies that are providing support to families and children. We know that there is a lot of safety and gun violence issues that are going on in our city. And so public safety has to be a priority, and that is a priority. One of the things that people may not realize is that there are several conversations that go on prior to the budget coming before city council. There are conversations, there are sit-down meetings with the mayor, other departments to look at what they are proposing, and we have input into what is important to us and what we can help drive. And so that's part of that collaboration, that's part of that building relationships, mutual trust, to be able to move things forward and get things done.
Turning now to the Second District again, Councilman Roberto.
Thank you. I think one of the first things you've got to think about when you're thinking about the budget is how responsible is the city being with your money, the public trust? And so I've certainly heard that at the doors here recently. And I want you to know that there is an Economic Stability Fund within the budget that is currently funded at $64 million, and that's 25% of the general fund. That fund allows us to have a AAA bond rating. That AAA bond rating allows the city to refinance some debt and save you $5.4 million this past year. Specifically, when you're thinking about what I hear at the doors, and my campaigns reached out to, you know, probably more than 1,000 doors already, and I've personally walked more than 50 miles on my way towards 100 before the end of the primary. What I hear a lot about is connectivity. What is, you know, people want to see more green spaces, they want to see walkability, they want to see sidewalks. And I've certainly been working towards achieving that. They also want to see our neighborhoods be safe and public safety. So we need to address, we talked about violence a little earlier, and violence reduction and prevention, and so that's certainly a very key place. Affordable housing is another big one. You know, over the past four years, this council has voted to approve $12.6 million in affordable housing. So we're moving in the right direction. There's more work to be done, and I'd like to continue the job and finish it. Thank you.
Turning now to the Third District, Ms. Singh.
Thank you. The biggest thing that the city does is service. So that's where a large part of the budget should go to. That means garbage pickup, that means safety, that means the fire department, that means maintaining services in the city that we've all come to count on. And I think a lot of us take it for granted when it's done well. I would like to see more of the budget go to preventing crime. When we prevent crime, we reduce victims. So I would like to see that. But I think that that needs to be done while still keeping money with the police system. There is, there are a lot of people that this is what makes them feel safe. There are a lot of people that this does not make them feel safe. So we've got to work on that. So the part of the budget that I would like to see go into social services, I think that we have been working on that. It's not something that we can, as Tommy was saying, it's solutions. There are also a lot of different pots that we need to put things in to keep everything going together. So if we're going to spend money on social services, we also have to bring money in. So a part of that money needs to go on economic developments as well.
Turning now to the Fourth District here, Jen McMahon. Same question to you. What are your priorities for a city budget?
So my day job. I work with folks that are exiting incarceration. These folks, when they exit, they're exiting with extreme trauma. And when they exit incarceration, they have no home. They do not have the social capital to be able to navigate a system that is built against them. How are you supposed to get a job if you cannot obtain transportation? How are you supposed to get a job if you do not have childcare for your children? How are you supposed to get a job when you are unable to access SNAP or WIC because of your previous felon experience, because of the record that you have? It's not just individuals that are exiting incarceration that are dealing with these issues. The pandemic impacted everything, impacted everyday lives, but more for the working-class families right here in Knoxville. So many individuals right now currently in Knoxville, from the Knoxville H M I S system, there are 3,827 individuals currently experiencing homelessness. Out of that number, 599 accredit lack of affordable housing as the reason for homelessness. So there are individuals, right now, that are trying to ensure that they have a roof over their head before they can even start thinking about sustainability. So within the city budget, we don't need to increase the spending and everything that we have right now. We need to reallocate funds for the people and the direct needs. And there are direct, there are community members right here in this room who know what we need.
Ms. Ryder. So I won't repeat what one of my colleagues said. The city is primarily a service provider and you guys enjoy your streetlights. Whenever I see one out, I'm like, oh goodness, the streetlight's out. The trash pickup. If your trash isn't picked up, you're calling us and complaining about it. Those are the services the city is primarily here to run, as well as public safety. We obviously have some challenges with public safety this past year, and we've been focusing how to reprioritize and make sure we address the root causes and work with the school system, the county, the state, and the federal to address some of the problems. Although we see it here on the ground, on every day, some of these problems, we would love to have the city budget, which is the smallest pocketbook out of state and federal funds, to be able to address all the issues. That's just not a reasonable expectation. So we must partner with those folks to be sure that we address the problems that we have. But again, the city is primarily a service provider and we must make sure 75% of the budget goes towards public, okay, I don't know how to make it stop. 75% of the city budget goes to the city employees. And we must make sure that the city is a good employer so that we can continue to have those positions filled and that we have our fire, our police, and our public works folks in getting our trash picked up. And the city employees have worked very hard to be, to make sure that those services are provided in a very efficient manner. The other thing that people in our community expect is the cap transportation. And we've been working with cap to increase bus transportation.
All right, our next question is, with regards to the African-American Equity Restoration Task Force, what do you see as the focus areas and how would you keep the community engaged and informed? We'll start with District Two, Councilman Roberto.
Well, this past Tuesday, council voted on the members to make up the council, and so I was glad to support that. I think what I would suggest is, certainly from my position, is I would want to listen to what the council says and to hear the priorities that they're looking at, and then, you know, be supportive of what we're hearing. You know, I think we've done a lot of work with streetscapes and other ideas. Certainly, there's been investment, and we want to see more investment, making sure that, you know, we're focusing on lots of areas in our community, not just one in particular. We want to make sure everyone has equal access to jobs, good-paying jobs. And the way we do that is making sure we grow in a smart way. So I'm definitely a proponent of smart growth and making sure that, you know, where we can help, you know, encourage development in a good way, that we can do that. So, thank you.
Ms. Singh, the Third District.
Thank you for being vaccinated. So we voted on the task force the other day, which the majority of the members are involved in many different aspects of the community. And so I'm waiting to see what kind of research they do and what they come back to us with. I can't say that I have the answers. If I had the answers, I would have fixed this already. But I would like to see what this group comes up with, and I will support what they recommend.
All right. Moving on to District Four, Ms. Ryder. What do you see as the focus areas of this task force and how would you keep your community, keep the community engaged and informed? I will, I will. With regards to the African-American Equity Restoration Task Force, what do you see as the focus areas and how would you keep the community engaged and informed?
Like, is it me? Again? Okay. So, the task force was just formed the other night, and I want to make sure it's clear to everyone, because I had someone comment to me today at lunch that we've given away a hundred million dollars. Not a penny has moved. There's a lot that we need to keep the community informed on. The task force was just formed. I look forward to having a lot of robust conversation and working with the community to find out what the needs are in the community. I think it's hard to say at this point what they need to fund. I know that we have some education issues to address, as well as some infrastructure to make things that are equitable across the city and in that district. It is not, as some people believe, some kind of giveaway, and it has, nothing has transferred out of the city budget. It's a commitment that we've made to build up a community, but it's had a lack of investment and a lack of desire for private investment. And I think that it's something that we're going to see what kind of recommendations they have to have a partnership. And the city needs to have ongoing communication and regular updates through council meetings and social media and maybe mailings to the community.
So, there's a forty-two percent poverty rate among black folks here in Knoxville, okay? These are black folks. These are folks that do not have the same opportunity as I do, okay? And if we look at, you know, if we're talking about what are, what, what should the priorities of this task force be? I can't say what the priorities of that task force should be, because I'm not a black person. I'm going to rely on the black folks in our communities that have been working in and for the communities their entire life. They know what the community needs, and for too long, their voices have not been represented. So, instead of relying only on twelve black voices, we should be doing story circles within our communities. We should be reaching out to our black churches and holding forums where we're collecting what is important to the black community. This needs to be led by black leaders and not folks that look like me. So, if I'm elected City Council Representative, I will ensure that any black initiatives are led by black community members that are working in and for the community. And to just say this, we need not equality, we need equity. Thank you.
Turning now to the first district, Mr. Smith.
I think like a lot of the comments earlier, I would agree that this needs to be a community-wide conversation, but that the black community probably needs to have the largest voice in the whole thing. But that's not new. I think some of us have been involved in this effort, this issue for a long time. It's not easy to solve. It's the reason the task force was assigned. It's the reason we assigned a hundred-million-dollar number to it, because it's a multi-generational problem that's going to take multi-generational response. The second thing I would say is that we don't need a lot of new programs, because there've been folks loving on that community, particularly leading that community, and just don't have the existing resources they need. So, we don't always need a new thing. We need things like Seed, The Change Center, Girl Talk, Unique Academy. All these organizations have been doing the hard work in this community for a long time and need additional support. The last thing they need is a bunch of new programs. With that said, where we can help, we can jump in right now. There's long-term changes that need to be made, and there's short-term changes that can be made. One of those short-term changes is getting the hands, getting money in the hands of black-owned businesses and entrepreneurs. Earlier this year, with the help of a lot of folks in the community, we launched a hundred Knoxville. I'm extremely proud of that program. Ten organizations, black-owned businesses, already have money to grow their business. And when they grow it, they hire folks in their community that work beside them. Those are the types of solutions that I think will come out of this. It should be focused on sustainable economic development, and it should be led by the people in that community who've been doing the long, hard work for twenty, thirty years.
Mr. Hayes.
So, one part of the question was how to keep people engaged in the process. I believe people are engaged in the process when they actually have faith something's going to come of it. Think about all the years, the folks that come to the east side, say, we got this shiny new program. We get year after year, you look at the budget, it's basically the same, just fancy new words, fancy new promises. You have initiatives that they say, oh, we have a hundred million dollars here. We have a program here just for black businesses. But you look at where the funding is coming from, you will see that the city doesn't invest a dime in this program for this task force. Hundred million dollars. No local funding at all earmarked. We need to see that money earmarked in our local budget, like in the capital improvements budget, right? That actually controls the infrastructure, actually earmarking tens of millions of dollars for infrastructure to the black community. I can say, we're not just going to start a business incubator for other people, to other people to lead. Actually, the city is going to lead it by putting local funds, putting skin in the game to make sure that the funds is getting to the, the funds is getting to the people. So, yes, I believe more people should be involved in the process. We need, we need to open it up. By the end of the day, people are not going to be involved, people are not going to care about these initiatives if they don't see change coming from them. That's why, instead of doing the same old thing, just rebranding, we actually have people who's going to come in and make systemic changes, make budgetary changes, stand up, stand up to people like the board of KDB, who's, who's overpricing folks. Stand up to developers who keep gentrifying our community. Because until we stand up to the folks doing this harm and make the systemic and budgetary changes we need, we're going to stay in these cycles of violence and trauma.
Before I turn to the sixth district, I want to repeat the question. The question is, with regards to the African-American Equity Restoration Task Force, what do you see as the focus areas and how would you keep the community engaged and informed? We'll start, again, we're turning to the sixth district here, starting with Vice Mayor McKenzie.
Thank you. And thank you for whoever submitted that question. Areas of focus, first and foremost, I would see that being the disparities that are in the black community. That's not something that's going to take us a lot of time to identify, because being a black person from the community who's had a lot of collaboration, partnerships, conversations, every black person in this room could probably tell you the disparities off the top of their head. So, we know what those disparities are. It's just going to take us continuing to work together, not just this task force, but the community at large. So, what does that look like? What that looks like is, we already have a webpage that's up, that's specific to the task force, where information will be posted there, the notes that will be, I would envision, because again, the task force has to come together and make these decisions. But I would envision workshops. I'm envisioning subcommittees that will be people from the community, people from the city at large, that will come to the table and share and collaborate, because the only way that we're going to be able to make this move and push it forward will be all of us working together. In the resolution, it did state that it would be city funds as well. And so, that is something that as we move forward in the future, absolutely has to be a commitment from the city budgeting as well. And so, someone mentioned that there are agencies and nonprofits already working in some of these lanes. Absolutely, they are. But we have to also look and say, if we have agencies in these lanes, what are those gaps? What are the existing gaps that could help them with capacity building, with having a greater impact? And so, will we need to have more programs? We don't know that answer yet. So, I don't want to say that we, we won't. But I do think that the ones that we have now are doing great work. We just need to look at what are the gaps and how do we continue to support them.
Thank you. Ms. Harper.
You know, we didn't have this problem then. Hello. Yes, yes. I was about to light the mic up, so I had to give me some technical difficulties. No, I'm just kidding. So, yeah, so the African, with, with the task force, personally, I, it's unfortunate sometimes we hear about disparity studies still today. Because that's kind of why we're, where we are right now with the hundred million being allocated, because we know there is a disparity within our community. So, I don't think there's no more study that needs to be done. I think that we know that there's lack of development that's going on within our community. So, that's an area that I think we need to focus on when we look at where funds should be allocated to. Also, we talked about violence interruption. We were asking for that, you know, months ago when we were on City Council, and people and members were sitting on City Council and coming to speak at public forums to talk about those things that they needed, and violence interruption was one of those things. I also believe investing in organizations such as the Women LLC, who is providing access to capital to small black businesses. We know that entrepreneurship is a way to directly reduce that forty-two percent poverty rate. And the last thing I want to leave, leave on is that, listening to the people, a lot of the candidates up here, we're in campaign season right now. Or if we're incumbents, we were doing campaign season and being elected. But a lot of the times, once we step into those positions, we miss really sitting down and continuing to listen to the people that we talk to to get their vote. So, I do think that continuing to listen, continue to talk to those people, whether it's listening tours, still walking the block like we do in campaign season. We still need to make sure that we are putting the voices of the people in front of us when it comes to what we're doing with the money. Because a lot of the time, the money that is being transferred to those communities, a lot of those people are not feeling the, the benefits of those monies. So, I would just want to make sure that we're listening, we're talking about violence interruption, we're talking about entrepreneurship and development within the District Six, and especially black communities and black people.
Thank you, Ms. Harper. All right, our next question tonight, again, these questions come from the audience. If you came in late, I did not write them. These are all from, from the community. "As a lower-income community member, I am worried about keeping my home and community. How would you ensure codes and policies protect homeowners in low-income communities?" We will start with Ms. Singh from the third district.
Thank you. This is something that I'm concerned about also. You know, it's not the City Council that does the tax assessment, but as home values are rising, all of our taxes are going to, it's going to go up. There's an equalization that the state level does, but there's more that we need to do. I think in other areas of the country that I have lived in, there are programs where income-based, keep your property taxes at the same place. And I think that that is something that we need to use here as well for older people, for fixed-income people, and for people who are working poor and cannot afford the property taxes as they change with their, the prices of homes going up.
Thank you, Ms. Singh. When I'll turn to Jen McMahon, District Four.
So, right now, currently, I have a very sweet friend living in Old North Knox. She just was able to get some assistance from the CAC because her son, at six months old, had lead in his system because of the lead-based paint that was on the inside of their home. She applied through, through the CAC to get some repairs on her home so that it was safe for her son. So, she was accepted, and she was super excited. She had single-pane windows, she had lead paint, and she was going to get some new doors, so that her home was a little bit more weatherized. But once she received that, she was met with some opposition. She called and tried to get some help through codes, and they told her that she had to follow the Old North Knox codes to make any updates to her home. And unfortunately, she's not able to do that at this current moment. What they stated is that if she did make updates to her home, and we do understand that Old North Knox has, you know, things that they want to see done to their homes in that district, but they're limiting her from being able to make these updates, just simply because she does not have the funds to be able to do so. If you are limited income, you cannot live in these historic districts, because you have to pay the price to make your home up to their standards. And so, this individual deserves a safe home for her son, and we deserve, as a city, to support folks like they from.
Also running in the fourth district, Lauren Ryder.
So, I'm familiar with the individual that was just referenced, and they had not made an application. So, they have not been turned down to be able to make the window repairs and the door repairs that they make. And the neighborhood liaison, who lives on my street, has been, she reached out to me, and I connected her with that individual. And they're working with her as of yesterday. Lindsay Crockett, who's Historic Zoning. For you to apply for a permit, work being done through CAC, you, to get a permit, you also have to go through Historic Zoning. And one of the reasons for that is house slippers come in to our neighborhoods and completely modify the homes and add extravagant and crazy things to them, change out many components, add stories, add dormers, and jack up the prices. It has caused a lot of inflation and gentrification. So, our guidelines have actually protected our neighborhoods from being further gentrified faster than they already have. So, this individual, I know her name, I've heard her story, she's reached out to me, and I've connected her with assistance. On the same note, the city has programs, including My Front Yard and some other programs through community development. There are four seniors in my neighborhood who have been able to stay in their home, because the city was able to work with them and help them have repairs to their home. Otherwise, they would have had to have left. And that is a great program that has allowed limited-income seniors to stay. And it's not limited to any, to any particular neighborhood. If anyone needs that, they can reach out to the Community Development Department with Becky Wade. Thank you.
Ms. Ryder, thank you. We'll now take that question to the candidates for District Six, starting with Deidra Harper. I sure will. "As a lower-income community member, I am worried about keeping my home and community. How would you ensure codes and policies protect homeowners in low-income communities?"
Yes, I do think that, you know what I mean, affordable housing is, is good, but we also want to make sure that equally as important would be jobs, right? Economic development, development and providing job creation, so that those individuals don't always need the assistance on affordable housing. So, we want to make sure that we are also looking at affordable housing and offering that. But as equally important it is to make sure that we are providing those jobs so people can have the livable wage income that they need to not also have to have affordable housing. I think that expanding the homemakers program is a great way to do that, to make sure that we are looking at those individuals, seeing that how we can help, making sure that they have the resources that they need to also stay in their homes and not be put out from not being able to afford where they live. So, I think those two things go together. We do need affordable housing, but we also want to make sure that we are providing jobs, livable wages, so that we don't need the excess of affordable housing, as well as looking at the systems that are already in place, such as the homemakers program, and seeing how that we can partner with them and expand those, so that homemakers, so actually, we want people to be in homes. We want home ownership. That's what the goal is, not to continue to have people in affordable housing and on the system. We want to make sure that we're providing them access to resources that they can own their homes. And I think that's a, that's a way to do it, looking at homemakers programs, as well as providing jobs that provide a livable wage, so that they can have the reason to own their home as well.
Thank you. Ms. McKenzie? Sure thing, yeah. "As a lower-income community member, I am worried about keeping my home and community. How would you ensure codes and policies protect homeowners in low-income communities?"
Thank you. And thank you to whoever submitted that question. One of the things that I will say is, even before COVID, because I know that there was a lot of grace that was allowed during COVID, one thing that I think all of us, most people know is that the city does not come after your property. It takes really a couple of years for that to happen. So, the person that submitted the question, I don't know if this is a person that's not employed, if it's senior or not. But one of the things that I think that we absolutely can look at is homemaker programs, as Ms. Harper had stated, but also looking at some type of creative fund where people can apply for assistance for their ta, for their taxes. I know that I have worked with Ms. Wade on a couple of incidents with people who've been struggling with their taxes, and she's been able to give them some resources as well. To my knowledge, there are no ordinances right now that allow for that, for tax relief. But absolutely something that we may need to look at if we continue to see the economy and going the way that it is and with COVID, especially during the pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McKenzie. Turning now to District Two, Ms. Roberto.
Well, I think we absolutely have to pay attention to keeping folks in their homes and have that as a, as a focus. When you think about policies and, and codes to help folks who have less resources, I think one thing you really have to pay attention to is zoning. And that's definitely been a focus that I've had. So, making sure that we maintain public process through zoning has been something I've fought for this past four years, and I will continue to fight for public process and notice and make sure everyone knows what's going on. If you think about zoning, when, if you were going to have something that was, you know, less appealing happen, you really got to watch out for less appealing happen, you really got to watch out for, you know, communities where, you know, there's less resources, right? And so I think by looking at zoning, that's an important way of addressing some of those, some of those issues. Another thing we've really got to make sure we focus on is jobs and smart growth, right? In the zoning code update, we updated it so you could have mixed uses along the corridors. Well, we have shortage of housing, right? Well, there's a, there's a great place to do some smart growth right there. We can, we can build in businesses on the bottom, residential on the top, and I've certainly been, since we passed that, been an advocate for getting that going so we can, we can see more housing for folks, because that'll help with affordability as well. Not just the rental, the rental affordability fund, but also just having people be able to own their own homes to stay there.
Thank you. Mr. Hayes, running in District One.
So I hope you all are paying attention. A lot of what you're hearing is one side saying the system is working and just needs a couple modifications here and there, and then everything is gonna be fine. And then you see some other of us just saying it's not fine. Forty-two percent poverty rate, that is increasing. The latest data shows us that forty-seven percent of black Knoxvilleians are living, uh, black Knoxvilleians of households are living under $25,000 a year. The poverty rate is now, of all Knoxvilleians, is now 41%. It is increasing, right? So we need to take substantial action now, not need dramatically reallocating funds, making sure we're standing up institutions like KUB, lowering people's utility bills by changing the payment plan structure, increasing weatherization, right? Working with CAC and other, and like funds that already exist so we can have more mortgage, rental, utility assistance funds, so when people need money, they can go and get it, right? Making sure we have down payment assistance. But making sure that we, just start from like, you know, fundamental levels, just working differently with developers. Instead of having people on city council who talk to you, and then go back and talk to the developer, and work in the developer's interest, we need city council members who's unapologetically gonna take your side. That's gonna say residents and neighborhoods come first, and developers, if they want to come into our neighborhoods, we have to fit into the current culture and will that displaces, right? Systemic, dramatic change is what we need. The current system is not enough.
Mr. Hayes, thank you.
I think a lot of the ideas we've heard recently are in place now, so in terms of dramatic changes, a lot of what you heard was investment, continue to invest in what we're already doing now. That's not enough, though. So 21% increase in property values, so over the past year, without raising taxes. The things that I think that are important are, if you own a home, you should be glad that your property values raise, but that your property taxes rise. I think everybody that owns a home can appreciate that. If you own a home and you're retired or low-income, we should make it, we should make it possible for weatherization, CAC, some of these organizations that are already doing a good work, to continue doing their work, and continue investing in that. The third thing is homemaker program that we have. I would significantly increase the budget for that program. I think we should double it. I think it's important enough to get people into their first home. Home building is important as it gets, excuse me, generational wealth building comes through home buying. I see folks in the audience who are renters who are helping folks increase value in their homes now without having to sell it. Last thing I think is really important is when you hear the word gentrification, what we're really talking about, it's a concern of all of us, is displacement. And I think investment without displacement can be done. It's happening in South Knoxville, particularly in the First District. People that own a home lose, their values are increasing without their property taxes increasing. We have added more than a thousand units of affordable housing on Chapman Highway alone in the past year, and I think that's a good balance that you have to have. Homeownership, sustaining homeownership, new homeowners, and getting folks affordable rental on the way across the district.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. All right, our next question from the audience reads, "What can you do as a city council member to reduce crime in our city, such as the issues of open drug use on our streets, property crime, and prostitution?" That question first goes to the candidates for District Six, starting with Ms. McKenzie.
So again, that absolutely looks like public safety, that looks like community policing, that looks like we have to know who belongs in our neighborhoods, we have to form together neighborhood watches, we have to support strong neighborhood organizations. If your neighborhood doesn't have one, create those. Those are some of the main things that we absolutely have to do. Also, if there, if you have neighborhood organizations, there is an officer that is assigned to your neighborhood organization, that is an advocate directly with that neighborhood, that will address those issues, that will come to the meetings, that will hear the voices firsthand, and also work with communities and neighborhoods on things that we can do as community members. Again, this is about supporting organizations that are out here doing the work as it relates to drug addiction, as it relates to mental health things. Also, we also have to look at how are these guns getting into our community? We've seen a surge in violent crime, especially with guns, in our community, especially in East Knoxville, but nationally. So I think we also have to say, what are these laws that are being passed in our state as well that contribute to that? And to public safety. Thank you.
Ms. Harper?
I know we talk a lot about crime, but one thing I want to make sure that we are all aware of is that crime, the root of those are a lot of times jobs, right? We don't have jobs, we don't, we have lack of resources, and we have lack of development, especially within District Six, where we have seen a lot of the crime happening over the last few months within this year. So we can talk about crime and making sure that we are having safe neighborhoods, but to me, what's important is making sure that we put jobs, we put development, we put resources in the community, and that will directly reduce poverty and the crime within those areas. It is important that we feel safe in our neighborhoods. It is important that we have that relationship with our neighbors and relationship with other community members, especially a good relationship with our police department that is supposed to protect and to serve us. So that's also important. So as well as holding our community members accountable, we also want to make sure we hold our government officials accountable when it comes to KPD. But more importantly, job creation, development, and investment within the areas where crime is high is a direct way to reduce that crime, direct way to reduce poverty. So let's make sure that we're really talking about root causes and we talk about things such as crime in our neighborhoods and crime within the city.
Thank you. We'll now turn to District One with that question, starting with Councilmember Smith.
I think the root of a lot of crime is poverty. And so poverty reduction programs, agencies, there are 20-plus in high crime, high, high crime, low-income areas. Blight is not a strategy. Blight is not a solution. We have to invest in communities without displacing them. So I think I agree with Deidra in the sense that investing in communities is the way that you help prevent crime. With that said, homelessness is a big challenge in our community. It's probably the number-one thing I hear in the First District. We've funded more outreach workers, more affordable housing, more permanent supportive housing in the past year and a half, in the past year and a half, than the city has in its entire history during that time period. So homelessness is something I care deeply about. I've worked in almost every agency in this community, serving in some way related to homelessness. Outreach is the short term. The long term is a mental health and substance abuse facility. The state got out of that a long time ago, and we're seeing the implications of it now. The problem itself, that particular problem, is too big for any city or county to solve. It requires the city, the county, and the state funding a facility that will help folks experiencing homelessness as it relates to substance abuse or mental illness. Those are the most things, the most important things, I think, in front of us, particularly youth gun violence, continues to be a problem, it was a problem, and we've invested in programs to curb that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Can you repeat the question again? Sure will. "What can you do as a city council member to reduce crime in our city, such as the issues of open drug use on our streets, property crime, and prostitution?"
Yes, to echo, to echo what Deidra Harper was talking about, we've got to look at the root causes of this, and understanding the poverty is the root, let's let that go. Let's understand the poverty is the root cause of this, of violence in our community, right? Lack of economic opportunity, and lack of jobs, lack of resources, lack of money, lack of ownership, all these things, right? But still, if you want to look towards how our city has been solving this issue, you look toward that budget, you'll see that the community organizations that a lot of you folks are talking about, they support, and you look down to the budget, this budget that's net over $400 million, you'll see just a million dollars go into these community organizations, right? You'll see crimes, right? The investment into the grassroots, into organizations on the ground, working with young people, making sure people have access to things they have access to, investing in the businesses, those are not funded by the city nearly as much as they should be, right? So when you hear them saying, yes, the city's funding those, we know, we know what the city's funding, but it is crimes, right? And another opportunity we can look at is on the, on the side of job development, economic development, is looking at the city's contracts. Less than 1% of the city's contracts for the black businesses. That is an opportunity to put directly millions of dollars into black people's hands, to train them, to do what the city is doing all across, the city is doing with the government thing all across the city when it comes to infrastructure improvements. We can actually help bill the black businesses, right? So we need a dramatic reallocation of funds, and just saying, just putting more money into policing, just putting more money into a couple caseworkers, is not enough. We need to double, triple, quadruple the amount of caseworking that folks we have on the streets, and we need to limit the amount of money we're putting into criminalization and mass incarceration.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Ms. Singh, running in District Three.
Question?
I sure will. "What can you do as a city council member to reduce crime in our city, such as the issues of open drug use on our streets, property crime, and prostitution?"
I wanted to hear the question again because, to me, some of these things, I don't see them as, as crime is the issue that we need to be talking about. Drug addiction, prostitution, these are not, who wants to be a prostitute? And when we identify that as a crime and start dealing with it in that, if we look at it in that direction, who are talking about? Our sons and our daughters. When we talk about addiction, we're talking about the same thing. When we talk about property crimes, that's a different topic. That is people who are trying to survive that have had a great deal of trauma and a great deal between poverty, between domestic violence, between all, all of the issues that are so heavy throughout this country. It is a side effect where the property crimes come from. When we say that this is, that homelessness is the issue, and that that is what we need to protect homeowners from, well, those homeowners, some of them will become homeless. Some of them, some of the people that are homeless have been homeowners. We need to see this as, this is, this is all of us, this is the community. It becomes a crime when people who don't have anything reach out to people who do have things, and that's not okay. But part of how we take care of that is making sure that the needs are met. And if we don't start there, all we're doing is locking people up. The state legislature was talking about making homelessness illegal, making it an act that should be fined. How are we going to solve anything that way? How are we going to squeeze blood from a stone and then treat people that are our relatives, are our family members, are our community members as just criminals? Sorry, I get really passionate about this stuff, and I think we need to spend more money on dealing with the root causes of this.
Thank you. Thank you. Turning now to the candidates in District Four, starting with Lauren Ryder. The question is, "What can you do as a city council member to reduce crime in our city, such as the issues of open drug use on our streets, property crime, and prostitution?"
Yeah, so we have a drug problem in the United States. We have a drug problem in East Tennessee. It is the root cause of a lot of our problems here. And again, I'll reiterate that the city budget is the smallest pocketbook, and we constantly keep asking where we're gonna get help from the state and the federal government. So if anybody happened to see in the newspaper last week, we're part of a class action suit to get funding from, or to get a settlement from, with several other states from the pharmaceutical companies. And that is the kind of dollars that we need to actually address drug addictions in this community. We've gone from pill addictions, and as that supply has dried up, we've gone to heroin. We are a major stop between Detroit and Miami, which is leading to some of our crime. And the police department has been working with the Detroit, the police department. So the obvious issues are when you see something, call it in, use Crime Stoppers, all those things. But there is no place to lock folks up. They're drug addicts, they don't necessarily, they're not gonna get better in jail, and it's an 18-month turnaround for treatment. The state has taken the Medicaid expansion, which means that a lot of people don't have a way to pay for treatment, which means we don't have many companies offering treatment here. Because why would you offer treatment when there's no way for anyone to pay for it? So I'm hopeful about the settlement, and if you read the article specifically, it says they'll be funding to municipalities. So we need to make sure that that's coming our way so we can address this.
All right. Same question to Ms. McMahon.
So for the last five years, I've worked with folks that were experiencing chronic homelessness, specifically veterans. Veterans that have been living out in the woods for 12 to 14 years. These individuals had gone in and out of incarceration because when they come out, like I said, they're in extreme lack of resources. No matter what the city is currently saying that they have available, I'm working directly every day with the folks that are calling for this assistance and putting on waitlists. A new, beautiful program was given out by Helen Ross of NAB, millions of dollars to be able to help assist to house folks that are exiting incarceration, because that's one of the main reasons why folks go back onto the street, I know from firsthand experience. It's all, it was all gone in a matter of a few days. It was all reserved for folks because there's that much of a need. No matter what the city is saying, there are so many calls that are going unanswered. These folks are going right back into recidivism. So in the state of Tennessee, we spend $31,481.35, which equates to $86.25 per day, per inmate that is in TDOC. And there is a 47.1% recidivism rate for those individuals for the exact reasons that there is no reliable and consistent mental, mental and physical healthcare for these individuals that are exiting. There is no affordable housing, no matter what is being said, because I'm helping these individuals try to find and identify affordable housing, but because of their previous felon experience, they are unable to get these assistance. Okay? And last but not least, transportation. And I know that there is beautiful cat buses, and I'm very, very thankful that we have cat drivers and workers that are trying to provide transportation, but what about the folks that are outside the bus line? What about the folks that have limited mobility that are unable to make it to the bus stops? What about those disabled vets that are out in woods that can't go to the bus stop because they don't feel safe because they're actively policed? Thank you.
All right, Mr. Roberto, running in District Two. I'm gonna have to say in that.
Thank you. You know, I think you have to address, when you're thinking about this, you've got to address poverty, you've got to address opportunity, job growth, smart growth. We've talked about some of that already tonight. You know, I, I got into running for city council four years ago because I wanted to make sure everybody in the city has the same access to opportunity that I did growing up here. You know, I grew up in Knoxville, I went to our county schools, I graduated there, and I'm fortunate that I'm in a position today where I can serve the community that I love, and that I can also have a small business. And everyone should have that right, everyone should have that opportunity. Everyone should be able to work hard and, and get there, and that's what, that's what I think we need to do to address poverty. Specifically, things that I've been supportive of is expanding mental health. We do have a mental health crisis, and we need to make sure we do everything we can to expand the access to mental health. Substance abuse is, and treatment, we've got to expand, continue to work hard to expand those opportunities. You can't address opportunity and seek out entrepreneurship and, and jobs if you're struggling in these ways. We've got to give people a chance so that they can address this on their own. You know, I think being safe in your neighborhood is, is a critical piece to, you know, being a council member, and I would certainly support making sure we have safe neighborhoods for everybody.
Okay, thank you. One more time, candidates, I just want to point out Judy Paulson here with the signs. I know it, you get on, you get on message and you forget about the little stop paddle, but I'm gonna have to be a little more aggressive about, about cutting you off, or we're gonna be here all night. So 90 seconds, that's a hard time. All right, the next question is a, is a big one. Do you support the multipurpose ballpark? Explain your answer. So first for that question, are the candidates for District Four, starting with Jen McMahon. Yeah, do you support the multipurpose ballpark? Explain your answer.
My answer is pretty short. No, I don't support it. Taxpayer dollars should not go to a multimillion-dollar project, multimillion-dollar individual that has the capability to put forth a stadium. If he wants to put the stadium here, use your own dollars, okay? Because we're just, you know, we are just talking about what our budget needs to be used for, and we need to make sure that our budget is properly being allocated to things that are going to
to things that are going to grow our community and not pad of the inside pockets of somebody that's already making millions of dollars literally every year.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ryder?
So I'm gonna give you guys the honest answer that I give on doors when I get asked about this. I hear a lot of people in East Knoxville are excited about this, people of color. And I don't think the white girl from North Knoxville needs to say no today. And I'm talking about myself, just want to be clear there. Um, I'm listening to those folks in East Knoxville to hear what they're saying, and I've heard a lot of excitement and positivity about it. What we as council are considering is a financial package, which includes the team paying. They initially offered seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year rent. The city countered back with, and the city and the county group countered back with a million, plus the taxes on the popcorn, the tickets, the beer, the t-shirts, the hats will pay for it. So the question is, what's the gap? Okay? We're not paying for a stadium, and also, there was an original number attached to it, an estimate of what it was. Um, if that's gonna go over because of, uh, current costs right now, we know that a, a two-by-four costs a jillion dollars today. Um, that's a conversation that we're gonna have. City council is having a workshop later this month, so we can talk about, a joint workshop with county commission to talk about what those numbers are. Um, one of the things that moved me to make sure that I'm listening to people that are in the community where it's going to be, is, uh, former mayor Raharo produced a letter from former councilman Danny Mayfield. And he begged and tried very hard to make sure that stadium didn't leave before. And the folks from North Carolina that owned the team at that time said, we don't want to be in this neighborhood. We want to be in West Knoxville, in the county. And Danny fought hard to keep it from leaving, and he failed. And people want to listen to that now.
All right, thank you. Uh, Mr. Roberto?
In general, I'm supportive of the proposed multi-use stadium. I definitely want to hear more from the community about the, uh, community impacts and making sure that the proposed, um, multi-use stadium will be a good neighbor and making sure of that. But also, looking at the economic impact study, making sure that the numbers all, all work out. But in general, I, I'm supportive of it. You know, if you think about downtown, um, you know, there was a time, I've, I've been here a long time, uh, there was a time when there wasn't a whole lot going on downtown, right? And we've seen that really become an economic engine that it is today. And that engine sustains our ability as a city to address needs in our community. And so we've got to make sure we have smart growth so that we can, we can help folks who need assistance. And so we need to make sure we concentrate on that going forward. Um, you know, I think as long as the stadium, the proposed multi-use stadium, which is not just baseball, it's multiple things, as long as it is, uh, gonna be a good economic investment, uh, for the city and the people of Knoxville, and it's, and it's gonna be a good neighbor for the community surrounding, and I, I will ultimately be supportive of it. But I want to review those things first. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Turning now to the candidates for District One, starting with Mr. Hayes. And let me repeat the question here. Uh, do you support the multipurpose ballpark? Explain your answer.
No, I do not. And I think one sad thing I'd like us to think about is what that space could have been used for. This space that was historically black, that was taken away from black people. It was a space that black people fought for. The riots in nineteen nineteen, black people had to defend the property from angry white mob, interstate government, coming in and try, and trying to cause violence among them. We defended, we shed blood for that property. That's what they're taking away from us. So it's saddening because that could have been so much for our community, but instead, it's just gonna be another tool for gentrification. I don't think anybody would argue with that, right? It's amazing how you have the boys, and you have Clayton's, millionaires, whenever they post a city for a project, they get, they get the green light, but you have a black developer trying to build some affordable houses, he can't get a phone, he can't get a phone call back. This is the city we're talking about. So, uh, I'm not, I, I'm against this, and one of the reasons why I'm against this is because I do not see a community benefits agreement. In Nashville, when they had a stadium came, come in, the, um, the developers signed the community benefits agreement, right? So that could make sure the jobs, the living wage jobs, that you are building capacity in black businesses, that funds are also going to the affordable housing, and that there was a guarantee in writing that there would be black programming, right? And programming that actually is centered towards people in the community. Um, so that CBA does not exist. There are some bathroom deals for some organizations in the community that aren't representative. Yes, there's been some black people in the community who said that they support this. You'll find some black people who say anything, right? But what about most of us? What about the working class people that lived there? They haven't been reached out to. Um, so no, I'm not against this, and it's a shame because we have, we have the potential to do so much more with our dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Mr. Smith?
Well, I don't live there, and I don't think, um, some of the other folks in our district don't live there. So I think it's important, number one, that we listen to the folks who do live there and work there and rest there. Those include the small businesses that are around there, includes the folks who are living in subsidized housing, and includes folks that live within a mile away. So the three things that I've been paying attention to are, are the people right around it want. What are the benefits for them? They get to have the loudest voice, not everybody else that wants to cast their voice upon them. So it's important for them to be heard. The second thing, well, first of all, on that note, you know what'll keep folks in, uh, East Knoxville being able to use that space? High-rise, uh, apartments and development that they can have access to. So you want to talk about legacy access and current access? We've got an acre in the middle of downtown that, uh, everybody can have access to, um, throughout the year. So the second thing is, do we have enough money to afford it? How much is it gonna cost? We don't know that yet, so I'm generally supportive of it, but I don't know anybody that buys something expensive without looking at the price. The third thing is, what happens, uh, when baseball parts? So Mr. Boyd can't last forever, and baseball might not last forever either. So how do we make sure that the city's not left holding a bag that we shouldn't be holding in year five, twenty-five, and fifty-five? So we have to be balanced in terms of fiscally, but we really have to listen to the folks right around there. Second, the most important community benefit you could have is to make sure that we invest without displacing. I said that earlier. And the best thing you could do was build a thousand affordable housing units that are subsidized, subsidized all around there.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
We have that right now. We're building Austin Homes. We will have a thousand subsidized units that prevent displacement. My bad.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on to, uh, the candidates for District Six, starting with Eva Harper.
Yes, yes. When talking about the baseball stadium or the multi-use stadium, it, it's hard to support such endeavors when, historically, when you see baseball stadiums in other areas, they have not been, uh, beneficial for the community that it sits in. I hear, you know, and then the other thing is that when we talk about a hundred million with the city of Knoxville, we have to go find that through grants, right? But we're directly trying to get a hundred million to communities that have been displaced through urban removal, well, renewal. But then when we just want to talk about a baseball stadium, the city is almost wanting to just go ahead and commit a certain dollar amount to this particular project. So it's unfortunate when we talk about the needs, and that's why a lot of us are up here discussing some of the things that we have in mind, is because we want a city that makes sure that it's definitely listening and, uh, addressing things that will concern the people and not just developers that want to come into the space. We also heard that the developers that are, or the businesses that are closer to where the multi-use stadium is gonna be are in supportive of it. But if you know about District Six, we have downtown Knoxville, we also have East Knoxville within the same district. So you can go a mile east, and it's gonna look very different than where you are in downtown, downtown Knoxville. So that's concerning because that's not a equitable representation of the voices that are made up within District Six. So it's very hard to support such endeavors when there's a lack of transparency. A lot of people, a lot of times when I'm speaking to them, just want to know, are our tax dollars gonna be spent towards this baseball stadium? And it's hard to give those answers when there's lack of transparency within our current, current city government and city council when those questions are being presented. So you ask, I'm gonna stop, because I think my point is clear.
Moving on to Ms. McKenzie.
Thank you. So, point of clarification, lace packing has been in that space since nineteen twenty-one. So definitely want to make that point of clarification. Initially, I was skeptical of this project, had a lot of questions, uh, that needed to be asked. We had the opportunity to be able to ask questions of other cities who went into same, to similar, uh, agreements between the city and developers to build stadiums, and what did that economic impact look like in those communities? Primarily, they were in same, similar types of locations that were adjacent to neighborhoods that were African-American. And they told stories of, and showed evidence that there were job creation, that that economic development created economic investment, it created jobs. One of the things that I also want to make sure that we are looking very closely at, and we've seen some, uh, seen some commitments, but we do need to see some things that are concrete, is a benefit, community benefits agreement. Uh, this multi-use stadium will not just be about baseball, it will be about concerts, it will be about soccer, it will be about festivals, it will be about marketplaces, it will be multi-use that can have, uh, events three hundred and sixty-five days a year if we're able to be, to be able to book those, those events. Uh, at this point, I am in favor of the stadium. Uh, please be sure that we also understand that this is not all the city, this is a city-county joint investment and venture. That will be the biggest investment in East Knoxville since the World Fair. I think that it will bring a lot of growth, it will bring jobs, and I want to see the African-American community benefit from this, and just as one of the things that could absolutely take us from generational poverty to generational wealth building.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. McKenzie. The question now goes to Ms. Singh, running in the third district.
Thank you. Um, when I first heard about this, my knee-jerk reaction was, I'm not building a stadium for a millionaire. And I think that's where we've all started. Um, it's a lot more than just what we see on the surface. We were having these same, very similar conversations when we were building the convention center, and the same kind of, uh, issues about why are the taxpayers funding this? Well, one of the reasons for that is, we need to make money in the city in order to be able to spend money on the things we want to spend them on. Uh, also, when this came, when the stadium conversations first happened, I really wanted to see a community benefits agreement. What they did in Nashville was, was wonderful. There were a lot of groups, a lot of agencies, a lot of nonprofits that were working together, and I tried hard to pull them together. As a council member, I cannot do that. That's not legal by state standards for, for the council to put certain types of conditions on a developer. Uh, so I really wanted to see the community come together and make that ask. As of now, I don't know that that has happened. Um, if we could get a group together that will work on that, I would support that one thousand percent. Uh, so the other piece of, yes, there're gonna be benefits to, to Randy Boyd, and that part doesn't feel good. But I'm not, I, I can't look at that and forget about the other things that it's gonna bring forward, sort of like, uh, throwing the baby out with the bathwater.
Thank you. Thank you. Boy, you can tell we're not used to in-person events. I've heard maybe fifteen phones ringing since we've been here tonight. A reminder to silence your phones. All right, uh, we've got a final question, and I apologize, there are a lot of questions we're not gonna get to tonight, but fortunately for us, we have a lot of candidate participation tonight, so we, we don't have time to get to every question. Uh, and then after this last question, everyone will have, uh, the opportunity to give some closing remarks. All right, this first question is going to go to our candidates, uh, for District One, starting with, uh, Councilmember Smith. Uh, on the topic of jobs, where exactly would you want a new business to locate, and what type of business do you want in your district?
Thank you for ever asking that, I could, for about ten minutes, but I'll be honest this time, okay? Small businesses on Chapman Highway and Vesel. This is a district seat, you have to know the district inside and out, you have to know where the opportunities need, and that's where the opportunities need to. I've successfully already recruited a couple of businesses to those areas, and that comes from a lot of hours of walking around, painting a vision for the future of the first district. So small businesses in blighted buildings are my number one priority, particularly in South Knoxville. The second thing is, we have a great partnership forming between UT, TVA, and ORNL, and that's not just something that's over here. Some of us are involved in recruiting businesses to Knoxville. I've helped a hundred small businesses, more than a hundred grow in Knoxville. I've also helped on the Chambers Economic Development Committee recruit businesses here. I know what the barriers are for talent to location, and I think that that partnership, particularly between those three entities alongside with the Chamber, is the real economic development engine that'll set the stage for the next ten years. We have a great development pool, it's called the University of Tennessee, we have great local colleges, so, uh, direct pipeline from high school, apprenticeships, affordable college, to those small businesses, or to those businesses that we're gonna recruit here, is the comprehensive lens we have to have as a community to keep it vibrant.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Hayes, uh, where exactly would you want a new business to locate, and what type of business do you want in your district?
Um, there's plenty of areas in South Knoxville in need of new developments. Um, I think, and, you know, just to be honest, y'all, the opportunities and the things currently available to folks aren't enough. Chamber of Commerce, the deal with ORNL, the UT, right, the little bit that the city's giving to, um, homemade programs of that nature, it's just, it's just not enough. I'm just, just, this past week, we had a business, a south, or a business in, in South Knoxville called South Press Coffee. Did his best to open up, to, you know, do everything, right? But at the end of the day, it just wasn't able to pass all the regulations from the city, trying their best. But at every single turn, there was something put up in front of them, right? I've heard, I've, I've talked to black developers in Burlington who have the same problem, right? But these aren't the problem that folks at the Clayton's are having, the Boyd's are having, right? Uh, and the, and the contractors and the, or even the developers who own so much of the city, they're not having these problems, but we are having these problems. So I think one of the things, the fundamental thing we look at to understand is not about bringing all of these businesses inside, it's looking at, how can we empower South Knoxville, South Knoxville to open up their own businesses, right? And saying that we aren't just gonna put a couple crumbs here and there, we're actually gonna put substantial investment and putting local funds to making sure that local folks have opportunities to develop their businesses, develop their cooperatives. So people like South Press Coffee don't have to have experiences where they just get blockballed at every single turn, right? So if one particular area, Vesel, a working-class area, needs a lot of development, but places all across South Knoxville, and there's brilliant people there with the skills and the ability to be able to grant themselves the benefits, they, they just don't have the capital. And another way we can do that is looking at, uh, looking at our city contract, contracts and making sure that local folks, the black folks, are getting these contractors and getting the skill, the skill to develop our own community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. I'm turning now to District Six, starting with Ms. McKenzie. Where exactly would you want a new business to locate, and what type of business do you want in your district?
So there are two areas that I'd like to see businesses in the sixth district, uh, one being mechanic steel area. I think there's the, uh, there's the infrastructure, there's the space there, and then also, uh, in the Burlington area. The types of jobs that I'd like to see, number one, uh, stronger support for small businesses, black businesses, but then also, I feel like we need to, uh, be intentional about making sure people have the opportunity and access to be prepared for jobs, that we are building a strong workforce in our community. And so I'm, I'm thinking about, there's partnerships with TCAT, there's partnerships with potentially Knoxville College with workforce development, that we continue looking at those partnerships, partnerships as intentional through the Chamber and their networks for people to be lined up to hire folks once they've come out of these job training programs. Uh, you know, I'm over the moon about Amazon. Maybe there's an opportunity for, uh, some additional hubs for Amazon that could be placed in the mechanic steel area. I know that the proximity to Burlington is probably a little too close, but those are the primary areas that I'd really like to see us put some, uh, intentional jobs. Uh, and also, when we look at those new businesses that are opening up, want to work more closely with them to make sure that they're intentional about hiring people from the community, because that's what's important, building community. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, thank you. Turning now to Ms. Harper.
Um, I would love to see, of course, development within District Six, especially Burlington. I think that's a great space to, that's kind of already ready for businesses to pop in. I also like to look at partnering with the Roots Collective, who is a, or, an nonprofit organization that is highlighting black businesses, making sure that they have the resources that they need. Incubator space, you know, a lot of times when you're in those spaces, working with people that are working on the same things that you are and moving in that direction, creativity exists. I do agree with KC also being that space that we can use to be able to have jobs in that area. But one thing I also want to focus on, even with Amazon coming and things of that nature, we want to make sure that we are providing the training that might be needed for these jobs to come. I do believe small business is important, as we noticed throughout the pandemic, a lot of people became, or didn't even know they were entrepreneurs, but had something that they really liked to do and had to do that in order to survive. But a lot of times, they lack the access to capital and the resources that they need in order to grow their businesses. So along with developing in Burlington, we want to make sure we have small businesses there, we want to make sure that the city is working to do whatever they need to do to make sure those businesses can get in there, especially being District Six, where a lot of the poverty and the crime sits. We want to make We want to make it urgent and make it a need to make sure that we are focusing and putting attention to that space to make sure we are creating jobs and putting resources where they are needed. And also partnering with Pellicippi, or you have the Jacobs Building, we have Amazon possibly coming, but we want to make sure that those people that can be accessible to those jobs are trained and ready to go when that opportunity comes.
All right, Ms. Harper, thank you. Turning now to District, I'm on the last question, and I've lost my spot here. I think I got it. Turning to District 2 with Mr. Roberto. And I'll repeat the question here. Where exactly would you want a new business to locate, and what type of business do you want in your district?
I want you to bring your business to Knoxville. So I would say, come to Knoxville. We have tremendous resources in Knoxville. And so one thing I would point out is that, that we have fantastic people who are hard working, who, who want to start businesses, own businesses, work for businesses. We have great folks here. Now, I know, there's a particular gentleman that I know who owns a small business, who decided to move to Knoxville because he was passing through, and he broke down, his car broke down. And people came out and fixed his car, and he drove on to where he was going, but when he left, he said, "I'm going back to Knoxville, and that's where I'm going to start my business." And he did, and that's fantastic, and we need more stories of that. Think about what happened, has happened while we've been dealing with this pandemic. How many neighbors have gone out and delivered you groceries, right? Or, you know, helped you out when you had other problems? That's the kind of folks we have here in Knoxville. So come to Knoxville, is what I would say. The other thing I would say is, think about the other resources, resources we have, natural resources. We have tremendous natural resources in Knoxville. If you were going to build a community that was ready to address the jobs of the future, it would be Knoxville. We have access to Oak Ridge National Laboratory, TVA, we have access to the University of Tennessee, we are, we are primed and ready to go, so come to Knoxville.
Thank you. Turning now to District 3, Ms. Singh.
Thank you. As I, when I opened up, one of the things I started talking about was a statistic in the 3rd District, the three zip codes and the 54% to 68% of people who had jobs, who were getting a paycheck but could not afford to live, they were just barely making it. So we don't just need jobs, we need some jobs that are going to help people survive and thrive. Yesterday, I toured a, a new manufacturer to Knoxville, this is going to be their flagship location, they're relocating to Middlebrook Pike. Their lowest-paying position starts at $15 an hour. That's what we need to start bringing. And I love Knoxville, we need jobs in Knoxville, but I would love for you to locate in the 3rd District. I've asked for a corridor study on Western Avenue. What that means is, to do a study to see what kind of businesses would thrive there. It's, the 3rd District is an area, I don't think there, there are not a lot of good-paying jobs there, and it's an area that people have to leave their homes and travel quite a bit of distance in order to get to work. I would like to see those present in my district.
Okay, thank you. Turning now to the candidates in the 4th District, starting with Councilwoman Ryder, and I will repeat the question. What, what exactly would you want a new business, where exactly would you want a new business to locate, and what type of business would you want in your district?
Yeah, so as I stated at the beginning, the 4th District has been blessed with over 900 jobs recently. The Amazon site, one of the things I ran on the first time was to work with whomever came forward, and/or the previous owners, to redevelop the mall site, that was over 70 acres. Fraley Schilling has located, or is expanding, at the Straw Plains exit, which remarkably is in the 4th District, if anyone didn't know that. And then Axle Logistics is located on Central, and they just bought the block next door to them, they plan to expand, and they work every day with UC Career Center to bring in new grads from there, as well as other colleges across the country. So those are three great places with new jobs, all with benefits and good pay. But we have great, we have a number of sites in the 4th District that are blighted and vacant, including the Old Food City there where the Kmart was, Virginia College, which was the old Kroger, the old First Tennessee Bank that just closed a few weeks ago and I had to move my bank accounts elsewhere, and then the old Social Security Building on the Central Street Corridor. So there's a lot of great opportunities. So clearly, we're, we've got the corner on the market on logistics and trucking in the 4th District, from North Knoxville all over to the, to the far east side. We need, we lost our hospital, and I fought against that, I worked with KICMA way back when, and fought to try and get the hospital not to leave us, which is technically in the 5th District. So we're really lacking in healthcare in the 4th District in East Knoxville, because I just want to point out, the 4th District wraps around to the far side in the east as well, 6th District.
Thank you. Turning to Jen McMahon, also running in District 4.
So it's really great that we got a lot of, that we got 900 jobs for the 4th District, but it's also, I really want to highlight that the pandemic impacted our communities greatly. A lot of small businesses went under, a lot of folks lost their jobs, and a lot of folks are still not recovering from that, most folks are still not recovering from that. And so we're talking about what kind of businesses we can bring into the 4th District. What I was told is that there's not enough room for affordable housing, we have to build, if we would build affordable housing, we'd have to build it on top of each other. So if we have all these available spaces yet, so we can make sure that there's a space between residential and commercial, but if we're trying to really address and make sure that there's new jobs for people, there needs to be places for folks to live, needs to be affordable housing for folks to be able to have so they can get jobs. And if we're talking about building businesses up, and building more jobs in, in the 4th District, we need to support the businesses that are already existing and increasing our workforce development programs, so that folks that are going to these jobs have the skill, the soft skills and the hard skills to be able to integrate from, you know, traumatic experiences that they may have had, or losing their job, coming out of incarceration, folks that are coming from other countries that have immigrated here. We need to make sure that there are proper workforce development programs so that folks that do acquire these positions are able to maintain these positions for long periods of time, and folks don't continue to hop between jobs because we have living wage positions here in Knoxville. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Before we get to our closing remarks, let's take a moment, you all have done really well tonight with holding the applause and no booing, it's been great. But if we could all now take a moment to give all of the candidates a round of applause and thank them for participating. It's more than half, more than half of city council on the ballot this year, five out of the nine seats. A few announcements here, early voting starts Wednesday, August 11th, that ends August 26th. Election Day, of course, is August 31st. The league has prepared handouts in the back there with important information about the election, including voting sites, they have a sample ballot over there and other information, and I believe there's some candidate information over there as well. I have to do that before the final, the final comment, or you guys start leaving and it gets impossible to get everybody back. All right, well, we'll start in numerical order, closing statements, and a reminder, these are 60 seconds, but starting with Knoxville's 1st District, David Hayes.
So quickly, shout out to the sign language interpreter, we appreciate y'all. So tonight, you've heard two paths. You've heard, let me get some of my notes out, but the first path, right, of the status quo, that supported a budget that's only marginally better than past budgets, a budget that's better honestly because of advocacy of CCM and other groups like that, and folks who have, right by the budget, does not, does not come close to adequately addressing the rising rate of poverty, violence, and gentrification, right? So I hope you choose the choice in front of you of progress of a Knoxville. I hope you vote for Jen McMahon, Deidre Harper, and David Hayes. One right now, and vote in all of us in November. And I hope you vote for it so we can, again, address the root causes of violence, and meet people's basic needs, right? And make somebody invest in economic impact that invests those, those of us who have the least, right? So vote for a Knoxville, oh, thank you for having me, and I'll put free in for you to talk to us afterwards if you have any questions.
All right, Mr. Hayes, thank you. Tommy Smith, also running for Knoxville's 1st District.
I also want to thank you for no booze as well, cheers for that. I've been serving this city my whole life, and I care for it deeply, and I think it's important that you elect somebody that has led it, knows it, and understands the needs and the wounds in the community, and how to solve them. We have to balance empathy with creative solutions, and if you only have empathy, you don't have any progress. I think the progress that the city's made over the past few years is hiding in plain sight, and I think that there are plenty of opportunities for us to continue to help those who need the most help. But unless you have the solutions, know the wounds, understand what's been tried, and what's important to solve going forward, we're all just talking about principles. We all share a lot of those, but they're only as good as you're able to put them to work. And so I'm asking for your vote for the 1st District, South Knoxville particularly is hit mid-strive, I don't think we should be invested in it, I think we should carefully continue the momentum of it for the people who live there, and make sure that folks who already live there can stay there, and I invite more small businesses to come to South Knoxville, so, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Smith. And I want to point out, there is a third candidate in that race for District 1, Elizabeth Murphy. I mentioned at the top of the program that she told the league she had a calendar conflict and could not be here. But closing words from Andrew Roberto here, District 2.
If the past four years have taught us much of anything, it's that experience matters. I mean, here we are today, having this forum, and we're wearing masks again. Who would have anticipated some of the things that we've dealt with, from the zoning update and its complexities, to the, the virus that we have that we've been dealing with during this pandemic? The people of Knoxville know how hard I work, they know that I studied the issues, that I listened. When I call, I ask, you know, "What do you think?", and I hear from folks. I've worked really hard to connect folks to the services that they need, to make sure that we're addressing environmental concerns, and we're dealing with our climate goals, that we're making sure that Knoxville is a great place for everyone, and that we can make sure that our kids can want to stay here. I know when I've gone and talked to folks before, they've said, you know, they, they weren't necessarily going to stay, and, you know, students, and we want to make sure that they want to stay, that we have jobs, that we have growth, that we're positive. I'm Andrew Roberto, and I would appreciate your backing.
All right, thank you. And I want to point out in that race, Kim Smith is also on the ballot in the primary, another calendar conflict. All right, District 3, Seema Singh.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out here tonight. There are a lot of really tough questions, which represents what this job is about. There was another forum we went to where people asked yes or no questions. That's like saying, "Do you still beat your dog?" It's not a yes or no kind of job. It's a job where I sort of miss the luxury of being a candidate that didn't, that wasn't in office. Then I could shout out, you know, "These are all our problems, and we need to fix them right now," and when I stomp in, "I'm going to do this and that and this." What I'm, I don't think I have changed, my values have not changed. What has changed is I realized that there are eight other members on council, there's an administration. If I'm going to make change, then I need to do it with other people, with collaboration. I do not believe that our city council members that have been my colleagues, that we are content with status quo. I think we are trying to make change, and we are doing it in an effective way, I wish we could do it quicker.
Thank you. And I want to point out, in that race, Nicholas Sipiro could not be here tonight, but you will see his name on the ballot in the August primary if you live in the 3rd District. All right, turning now to District 4, starting with Jen McMahon.
Hi, folks. I just want to thank Lauren Plisheim for being here and interpreting tonight's forum so that it can be accessible, accessible to all folks attending. I just want to say that I'm not a multi-property owner, I'm not a multi-business owner, I'm a nonprofit worker, I'm a new caregiver, I'm a community organizer, I'm somebody that's working every single day to address the immediate needs of folks in our community. I'm making calls to folks' houses and dropping off food in the middle of the night to make sure that their families have food the next day. I'm going out and knocking on doors to make sure that people have proper representation when it comes to understanding what current policy is being pushed forth through the city council, and through, through Knoxville County School Board, because the information that's being published is not accessible and understandable to all citizens here in Knoxville. So I'm not going to benefit from this position in any way, other than just being able to provide a space on city council that's a true voice for the people. I'm not going to tell you that your voice is not, does not matter, I'm not going to tell you to be silent, I'm going to tell you to come to me with my problems, I'm going to take it, because it's my responsibility as your leader to listen to your needs.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Ryder.
Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight, there's so many organizations that made this possible, the moderator, the interpreter, and everyone who attended and came out. I want to ask you for your votes. Early voting is August 11th through the 21st, and August 31st, my birthday, is the primary if you're in the 4th District, and you'd like to join me in voting that day. I'm proud of the work that myself and my colleagues have done while we've been on council. We have persevered and worked and tried to progress and build upon what was a great Knoxville, and clearly still has some problems. And we've struggled through the pandemic, and we've all made it, those of us who are still here have made it out the other side, and we're going to try and go through this next fall. I'm proud of the work that we've done, and we still have some critical work to do. We know we have housing, we passed the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and I just want to point out, I named some sites in my district that were eligible for development, and the question was jobs, and I want to point out, I hope that we don't just have commercial and jobs come to those sites that I named off, those vacant shopping centers. We, the people on council, work very hard for zoning that allowed residential there, and that's what we need to address housing shortage.
All right, Ms. Ryder, thank you. Turning now to District, District 6, Vice Mayor Gwen McKenzie.
Thank you. So real quickly, I want to say that I am a 6th District City Council person who grew up in East Knoxville, who went to schools between East Knoxville and Mechanicsville, who's very accessible, who hears from constituents, from people in the community on a daily basis, starting at 5:00 AM in the morning till midnight sometimes, and I don't mind because it's a labor of love, because we have a lot of people who are hurting in our city, and especially in my community, it's been very challenging, but we work together, and we push forward. And I think there's no one in this room who's ever contacted me and said that, "I want to do something," or "I'm doing something, I have a nonprofit," or "I have a project," that I've not said, "What can I do to help?", or "Hey, let's, let's make it happen." And we do. So it's not about sitting here and thinking that we can solve all the problems in the city, because it's going to take the city, the county, and everybody in this entire city and community working together, and so that's what I want to continue. The view does look different, and you're sitting on the other side of that table. We were like a lot of people, a lot of these candidates before, but again, Gwen McKenzie, hope that you will send me back, reelection, to serve as second term, so we can keep moving forward together. Thank you, God bless you.
Thank you, Ms. Harper.
Thank you to the black leaders, men and women that are in this, in this audience, and also to the black business owners that are in this audience, men and women as well. Thank you so much for encouraging me, and just being with me on this journey, because I think we all understand that District 6 needs someone who is unafraid and knows when and how to push back. District 6 needs someone who is fed up with the 42% poverty rate and policies that divide instead of unite. District 6 needs someone whose tenacity is fueled by growing up in this community, witnessing rising poverty, relentless crime, loss of jobs, and gentrification firsthand, and the voices of the people being ignored and brushed off. So District 6 needs Deidre Harper, a vision and voice for change, a vision and voice serving the people, a person that is going to give 110% to change. What we have been seeing is not enough, we cannot continue to go on with business as usual. We need someone who is going to put the extra 10% and make the effort that is needed to be made to make sure that all the voices are heard.
Okay, thank you. And you all are still seated, so I still have time to make one final note here. Such a good day. So in the primary, Districts 1, 2, 3, 4, and 6 are all on the ballot, the top two will then advance to the general election in November. If you, in the primary, you will vote in your district, and then in the general, everyone, including those in the 5th District, will vote. Did that make sense?
Yes.
You say it over and over, and it starts to make sense. All right, thanks, thank you all for coming. Take care, everybody.